Metallic spray.
Hmm.
You had done that before?
It works.
How do you know?
Take it down to the service.
I, I say it works, right?
Can you hear me?
So mostly speaking from.
Experience.
Speaking facts.
They say experience is a good teacher.
Experience, exactly.
She probably got a can of that in the car.
No, it's a. It's a new agenda. Now it's gonna be Reverend Robert Thomas. Uh, just the speaker and these add-ons. Ms. Nance, could you come here and sit down, please? Reverend Robert Thomas, Thomas, Reverend Robert Thomas Fellowship. Uh, for her agenda, for the new agenda, there is the H D. With Reverend Robert Thomas on it.
Oh, yeah.
That's all agenda. Oh. Christian, Chris- Christian Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church.
He should've came.
So when did y'all change?
It was fun.
Did you go, uh?
To what? Oh, yeah. Uh-huh. It was good. Yeah, I'm gonna stay long 'cause he's so close. Stop it off my knees. But it was really, really good. Took us a whole lot of pictures.
Yeah, he told us that he couldn't make it. So we had to get to my knees.
And them babies on the sheep, honey. That one girl, she rolled that thing, then she dove.
You did. They did.
Uh-huh.
I'm having no.
Okay. I think it's. Reverend Robert Thomas. You got it?
I appreciate it.
No, what? Mmm, I got this one in my packet.
I don't get all this anywhere. They, they, they sift, they dump the dirt in and then the machine move it around to. And then they're gonna come and get it. Yeah, they're gonna get it. And they, they, they have something to protect the floor.
Uh-huh.
I was like, who was cleaning the bed? Literally. But it was fun.
Evening. It is now five thirty and we're going to start our council meeting this evening with our public speakers. We have two speakers who are speaking on agenda items and then we have two speakers who are speaking on non-agenda items and they will speak after our agenda. The first speaker is Kathy Malawski and she's speaking on agenda item number six. She's speaking for this item. Kathy?
Hello and thank you. My name is Kathy Mayewskah and I represent the Sanger Theater, which next year will celebrate its one hundredth years. A few weeks ago, the Sanger was, uh, featured in a documentary from the Discovery Channel, a program that was entitled Mysteries of the Abandoned. It was presented worldwide, uh, first in Great Britain, United States, Australia, New Zealand, and as I say, worldwide. This was a couple of ye- uh, weeks ago. Before that, a few years ago, a group from Paris, France came in, architects, that was doing a study on freestanding theaters in the United States, of which our Sanger Theater was one. This theater deserves to be restored. My husband and I, again, a few years ago, before he died, we did a survey going to five or six of the Sanger Theaters that are still working. We found that, and they stress the fact, that around these theaters, renovation, restoration, and complete revitalization of the areas took place. My husband and I started the community theater before he died and we found this to be true. Now, four years later, what's happening down there? Nothing. But we have the Sanger Theater, which could be the biggest revitalization in Pine Bluff and one of the most significant buildings that we have. It's going to be more than just the, uh, roof repairs. It deserves to have the creme de la creme, those people with the League of Historic Theaters, those people who came here, Ms. Ms. Mayor, you've met them, who had restored the King's Theater in Brooklyn and responsible for restoring most of the Broadway Theaters. They were here with an interest in our theater. We deserve no less than to, to honor our theater and to restore it. So, please consider beyond, which I'm hoping that you will consider, the forty-nine to fifty thousand dollars to save this building, which needs to be saved, but to go beyond and we will have one of the most glorious palace theaters in the United States. So, thank you.
May I say something? Excuse me. How are you?
Well, thank you.
I remember a while back, we passed a resolution or gave some money to have the roof repaired. How bad is it leaking?
The, the roof was on the main flat part, but the mansard roof, which is the side parts going, was not addressed and it has been devastating to the Sanger. I mean, I'm gonna say devastating. The, the, the structure, the bones of the theater are amazing, but it's done a lot of damage to the, to the plaster and it needs to be addressed. I was there, oh, not too long ago and we had a work crew that got in and from the foyer, the lobby, to the auditorium, we cleaned it up, but, um, it was not addressed like it should've been.
I remember you and your husband first started working on that.
I remember, yes.
What happened?
Well, uh, we turned it over to the city and I don't know what all has been addressed from that point. My husband and I, as I say, we worked very hard with getting the community theater restored and my husband passed away. And we lost the theater and, uh, but I've not forgotten my promise to the Sanger. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else that I might, I might address? Thank you. And, and on behalf of the Sanger, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay? Our next speaker is Ivan Whitfield and he is speaking to agenda item number one. He's speaking for agenda item one.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, and to the entire City Council, City Clerk and City Attorney. Uh, Ivan Whitfield, I came to support the initiative because I do believe it's, the rank structure is going back to the way that it, um, has been in the past and it worked better that way. I support that whole highly, would ask that you all would, um, consider giving that a total due pass. Um, the only problem, uh, Mayor Washington, I think I have to say that we have to be careful. I want the council and the mayor to understand, the assistant chief do in fact have the rights to appeal on demotion and termination to this body, to the City Council. That is the law. Uh, nobody can come in, if, if the, if the, a new chief comes in, him or her, and the spot is open, it's their choice. But that assistant chief spot is already filled. The law is that if that person is terminated, demoted, they have the appeal rights to this body. Um, I say that because, uh, I live that and I know that. So I wanna make sure you all understand that because when those things get out, it has a tendency to hurt the department. Um, and, um, we know it did not come from Chief Richardson. She did not ask for that, she just wanted the structure of it. But I wanted to clear that up, that the assistant chief has that protection and every position should have that protection because he or her works hard to get to the assistant chief's lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember, former councilmember, former police chief, Ivan Whitfield. At this time, we're going to call our meeting to order as that's the last of our public speakers before the agenda. To, this evening, we have coming to us for our invocation Reverend Robert Thomas. Is he here? Reverend Robert Thomas coming to us from Christian Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church. Good evening, Reverend Thomas. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This evening will come from the Old Testament, Psalms one thirty-three. And it reads in this fashion. Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethrens to dwell together in unity. It is like the precious ornament upon the head that ran down upon the beard, even Avon's beard, that went down to the skirts of his garments, as the dew of Hermon and as the mount of Zion. For there the Lord command the blessing, even life evermore. Let us bow. O gracious and almighty God, we come this evening as humble as we know how. We come asking Master that the business that is at hand, that we will deal with it in a spiritual, in a spiritual way. Whereas, O Master, that you look down upon each and every man, woman, boy, or girl here today. Whereas, O Master, that we need you and we liken the city unto the lady that had the issue of blood. We acknowledge, Master, that we're bleeding and we need help. Whereas, O God, that if you will, and we know that you will because you said ask, that you will heal us, you will fix things for us, that we would be on one accord. Master, we need you right now. Whereas, O Master, that as I close this prayer this evening, that the words of my mouth and the meditation of your heart would be acceptable in thy sight and to these your people. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you, Reverend Thomas, so much for that touching prayer. We appreciate you. Next on our agenda is our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb Junior.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Senior. Councilmember Shaner.
Here.
Brown Senior.
Councilmember Frazier, here. Councilmember Brunson, here. Eight present, one non present, seven in person.
So we have seven in person and we have Councilmember Shaner on Zoom. Okay, everybody present. You should have a copy of the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Let the minutes from our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor of this motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes stand approved as presented. Moving into our committee reports, we will begin with Ways and Means. Councilmember Mays with Councilmember Brown Junior substituting.
Thank you, Mayor. Inside of your packets, we have the, uh, Legislative Joint Audit Committee, Legislative Audit for Arkansas, twenty twenty-one audit. And so, we just wanna let it be known that this, uh, information, this report is on file within the clerk's office. So if anybody wants to review it, if anybody has any questions or concerns, then you can, uh, address the council, I guess, at a later time. But this is on file for anyone to review inside the clerk's office. So that's our twenty twenty-one legislative audit. Okay? Moving forward, we have one budget adjustment for this evening. It's coming from the twenty seventeen sales tax fund. Total budget adjustment is five hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, this is for the Delta Rhythm and Blues Cultural District. Um, I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve a budget adjustment for the Delta Rhythm and Blues Cultural District projects in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, coming from the twenty seventeen teen sales tax budget. The floor is open for a question.
I would like to say something.
Councilmember Frazier.
Um, like I said in the committee meeting, I have no problem giving the two million dollars. My concern is the rest of the funds for the Delta Rhythm and Bayou. And it appears that although we were only asked to give two million dollars, that we're gonna have to come up with the other part two. And we're gonna need help and support with that. It can't be solely on the city funds to do that. So I am hoping that we will get some grants and some other support that will be able to help us to complete this project. Because like I said, yes, the citizens want this project, I want this project, we all want this project, but you all are also gonna hold us accountable if it's not completed. So I just wanted to put that on the record, Mayor, that, um, I am for this project and I just wanna make sure that we have the support and the funds to make sure that we complete it.
Okay? That's understandable. Councilmember Brown Senior.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if I may respond to what she said, whether it's directly to her or to the council, but we did approve it and so by our approval, then we, it's up to us to find it or whatever the case may be. So, and, and basically, um, there are a lot of projects that we have and we always find the money to do it, but I don't want to put it on the pending that it's, uh, it's, it's a scary thing that we can't find the money. We approved it and I think that's the bottom line. Thank you.
I don't think she was talking about the two million dollars.
Yeah, I'm not saying the two million, I know we approved the two, that's what I'm saying. We approved the two million dollars, I have no problem with the two million dollars. Given the two million dollars, I wasn't here at the beginning of this negotiation, but you only asked us for two million dollars. But the project is more than that. And what I'm discussing is the more. Um, I just want us as a city council and us as, uh, whoever else that's in Cunningham to look for funds besides, Mr. Cunningham, to look for funds besides just taxes. Because what you don't look at as the, when I look at stuff, I look at the whole picture because if you're looking for us to fund this, we're also looking at employees because I come from both sides, the employee side and now on the city council side. The employee's gonna want raises, we're gonna wanna do other stuff for our city. So we, we have to be cautious about how we allocate these funds. And so, they asked for the two million, I don't see us having a problem giving the two million. I'm talking about the rest of it so that we can complete it. Like I said, I want this project to be completed. Thank you, Mayor.
And I think Mr. Cunningham has a vision and a plan for other dollars coming in. I know he's working on grants. And hopefully, other funds will have to flow as well to complete this project. And I think that might be between six and eight million dollars overall. But it'll be a lot of work and you're right, needing support and embrace from the entire community. As we move forward. Okay, any other questions, comments on this? If not, let's vote. All in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget adjustment is approved.
Uh, Mayor, that concludes Ways and Means.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Next, we'll have our. We've done that on your agenda. Ordinances and resolutions, Councilmember Mays Senior, I'm sorry. Councilmember Mays Senior with Councilmember Holcomb substituting.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six agenda items. Number one will be, be completed tonight. Number two will be completed tonight. Number three will be completed tonight. Number four, five and six are all resolution, they will be completed tonight. Everyone should have two resolution, excuse me, two ordinance that will be added to the agenda, we'll have to vote on. Num- the first one is three A. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College and declaring an emergency. That would be three A. The second one is three B, an ordinance amending section two dash one eight, one of the code ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting limitations of terms as regards the planning commission and for related purposes. We have five resolution that had to be voted on, also to be added to the agenda. Number seven is a resolution appointing Adrian Cooper to the planning commission. Number eight, a resolution appointing Kiana, did I say that correctly?
Kiana.
Kiana, C. Colclager to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees. Number nine is a resolution appointing Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. Number ten, a resolution appointing Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. And number eleven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property to Don LaTey Investment LLC, Lot Six Henderson Subdivision, Southwest Corner, Twentieth and Pine. All of these have to be voted to be added to the agenda.
Move to add an ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College and declaring emergency.
Second.
It is moving properly seconded that we suspend, uh, competitive bidding, waiving the competitive bidding, uh, to add this to the agenda tonight. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mays. Councilmember Holcomb Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Item three added to the agenda.
Uh, move, uh, move to add an, an ordinance amending section two dash one eight one of the code ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting limitation of terms as regards to the planning commission and for related purposes.
Second.
It is moving properly seconded that we add this described ordinance to tonight's agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Three B added to the agenda.
I was still reading that one. Um, move to add a resolution appointing Adrian Cooper to the planning commission.
Second.
It's moving properly seconded that we add to the agenda a resolution appointing Adrian Cooper to the planning commission. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Note that is resolution number seven, item number seven, added to the agenda.
Move to add a resolution appointing Kiana C. Colclager to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
It's moving sec- properly seconded that we add a resolution to the agenda appointing Kiana Colclager to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Item number ten, I'm, I'm sorry, item number eight, added to the agenda.
Um, move to add resolution appointing Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board.
Second.
It's moving properly seconded that we add a resolution appointing Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays. Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Number nine, item number nine, added to the agenda.
Move to add a resolution appointing Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board.
Second.
It's moving properly seconded that we approve a resolution, add to the agenda, a resolution appointing Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Item number ten, added to the agenda.
Move to add a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property to, uh, Don LaTey Investment LLC. It's our.
Second.
It's moving properly seconded that we add a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property to Don LaTey LLC Properties. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
Number eleven approved to add to the agenda.
Mayor, that concludes ordinance and resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Next we have Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor.
Member Brown Senior.
My report is always the same that we have several projects that been, that's, that's either right at the edge of being complete or they're being complete period right now. Mr. Matthews and I constantly talk about our, our projects. But I wanna make this statement, I wanna make this announcement. We are a city that can control our own destiny. We embarked upon a private group and at this time, it chose a black eye for our city. From the beginning, I thought that this would be a black eye. I thought that it was totally not the right thing to do. I know that a lot of you sitting here at this city council table and in the audience know how strong I was against this. Not only did we get that black eye, but something come up in an article on Saturday, that something that didn't fit right either. So, my take is that we're a city that can operate ourselves and as a city body, we need to operate and act as though we are a city body. We're elected by the people in each of our wards. And with that being the municipal government procedures, we should appropriate and do the things with city tax dollars that, that are on the books and record for us to do. So what I'm, I'm suggesting right now is that we put this private group behind us. We just need to, just, just take ourselves away from that private group because right now, it's constantly a black eye. There's something coming up every day about this private group. And everybody know that private group that I'm talking about. And I just think that, um, enough is enough. It was enough for me from the beginning because I don't know what, I don't know a city council in the, in the United. It was enough for me from the beginning because I don't know what, I don't know a city council in the United States that would actually pass a tax and get the entire tax to a private group. I've seen that. I did read up on LDR doing things, but they did not pass a tax to give it to an entire, get the entire tax to a private group.
So what are you talking about, Mayor?
Who, who's, who's talking?
You?
Who's talking? Uh, who's talking? Who? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that nobody came in. I'm like, so.
Yeah, what group you talking about?
It's okay. But I think that we know what group I'm talking about and I think that the city needs to move, the city need to go and do the things that city is supposed to do. We need to operate as a city. We need to operate with transparency. We need to operate with the thought that we can handle this, that each and every one of us, including the mayor, was elected to do right by the taxpayers in this city. And I think that we need to do that. I just, there's no other way to look at it. I mean, you can, um, you can say, no, 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 that didn't happen. Well, it's in black and white, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Our next report will come from Councilmember Frazier, Public Health and Welfare.
No report, ma'am. I will get with the clerk to set up my next meeting.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Shaner, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you, Mayor.
Okay, we're ready for our Public Works report?
Public Works met on June the twenty seventh during that meeting, the Aquatic Center. They reported that they had met fifty-five percent of their projected revenue for the year. And they currently have four hundred and twenty-five active memberships. Uh, clean and beautiful. They are working on grants, parks and rec. They are waiting on a evaluation for the splash pad. And also they were cleaning up downed trees at Harbor Oaks and at Regional Park after this last storm. Uh, the street department, Mr. Bennett reported that the FEMA claim had been submitted for review. Uh, also this past Saturday for the free dump day, we collected sixty-nine loads of trash and debris. Finishing up on completion of Cherry Street Overlay Project. Uh, they're currently fixing potholes in wards one through four, mowing ditches and currently looking at having more lighting on the twen- on the bridge on Twenty-Eighth Avenue. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaner. One of the things that I would like to add to that report is the splash pad. And I know many of you have noticed that we had the splash pad running for a minute and now it's down again. And that splash pad is so problematic, we're going to have to make a decision as to whether we continue to make repair after repair because this, this has gone on ever since it's been there. And it's caused by the positioning, the place where it is within between a river or lake, should I say, and a highway. So you're constantly having underground problems. So there may be a Public Works meeting where we'll have to make a decision as to whether we continue to make those repairs or whether we transform that space into another public space.
Excuse me, I thought that was corrected last year.
We have worked on it every year. We've worked on it this year and the pipes continue to shift. And we've done some of everything that we know to do and all of the professionals who have come down and looked at it has said it's the location. That's.
Well, at this point, Mayor, excuse me again, Mayor. Excuse me again. At this point, so we have the splash pad, so are we just going to eliminate it out of our city recreation? Or are we going to try to find another place to put it?
Our goal is to find another place to, well, you really can't move that one.
I know, I'm just saying.
Yes, our goal is to relocate it. I mean, that's our thought right now. We haven't made that decision, but I'm letting you know that the day is coming when we will probably have to make that decision. Because we have spent so many dollars on repairs to that.
I don't want to take it out of the plans, I want to keep it.
No, we don't intend to. We'd like to have one in Pine Bluff, like have more than one. We need multiple, but we cannot continue to spend money on this one. Uh, that has been so problematic ever since the day it opened. Ever since I've been in this seat, we've, we've made repairs. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Shaner for your report. Moving right along, our next report will come to us from Councilmember Lockett, Development and Planning.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Development and Planning Committee met on Wednesday, June the twenty-eighth at six o'clock in the City Council Chambers. We discussed a, um, resolution that was supporting the Delta Rhythm and Value's Cultural District and to, uh, uh, place the money that we had agreed upon, uh, the six hundred, I mean, the five hundred and ninety thousand. That resolution, now that we've done a budget adjustment, won't be necessary. We'll just move forward with that budget adjustment as is and as stated in the budget. And there was lively discussion and a lot of support for the project. And I'd just like to thank the mayor and council for the continued commitment to the Delta Rhythm and Value's District. I think it will be an asset to this community once completed. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lockett. Traffic and Aviation, Councilmember Frazier. I'm sorry, Brunson.
I'm on it, though.
Frazier, you've done yours. You, you, we've passed you, I'm sorry. Brunson.
I, um, thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report. We do plan to meet tomorrow, um, at one thirty, um, at the City Council Chambers and via Zoom. If anything changes, I will try to send out something early in the morning about that. Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
And that will be via Zoom only?
No, and in person.
In person, so it'll be a hybrid meeting? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brunson.
Thank you.
Administration, Councilmember Holcomb Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee met last Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at one thirty PM. We met with the Economic and Community Development on the subject of the job description for Economic Community Specialist. It came back to the full council with a due pass. We also met with the City Clerk's Office. An ordinance providing for the coordination of efforts between city departments and City Clerk's Office to assist the City Clerk's Office in its performance of its statutory obligations. And also an ordinance amending Article One and Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas to add new section, section two dash seven respecting the assertion of documents by a city clerk and for related purposes. Both of these ordinance from the City Clerk's Office came back to the full council without a recommendation. We also met with Human Resources and ordinance amending provision in section four dash two of the Non-Uniform Employees Handbook Regarding Tardiness. Another ordinance and ordinance amending section seven dash nine of the Non-Uniform Employees Handbook Regarding Authorized Leave of Absence. Third ordinance was ordinance amending the Technology Use and Privacy Policy. Section one dash two of the Non-Uniform Employees Handbook. All three of these ordinance came to the full council with a due pass. We also met with Chief Richardson of the Pine Bluff Police Department. An ordinance amending section two dash one of twenty-six of the Code and Orders of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting the classification of personnel with the, within the police department for related purposes and declaring an emergency. Came back to the full council with a due pass. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That was a lengthy report and a lot of those articles, those ordinances are not going to be in the packet tonight. They'll come forth in our next meeting.
The only one that's in the agenda tonight is number one.
Okay, very good. The others are forthcoming, so look forward to those in your, uh, next meeting for the month. Public Safety, Councilmember Brown Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety met just before this council meeting. Uh, we had one agenda item and that was, uh, agenda item that we have now, three A. And that was, uh, moved on to the full council with a due pass, um, by the, uh, Public Safety Committee. I will get with the clerk on my next meeting. I will try to have it early next week, uh, maybe Monday if possible, but I will get with the committee members to get a good time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Moving into our proposed ordinances and resolutions, Councilmember Holcomb.
An ordinance amending section twenty-one dash twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting the classification of personnel within the police department for related purposes and declaring an emergency up for the second reading.
An ordinance amending section twenty-one dash twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting the classification of personnel within the police department for related purposes and declaring an emergency.
Suspend the rules, place this ordinance up for its third and final reading.
Second. It has been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior. My apologies.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
An ordinance amending section twenty-one dash twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting the classification of personnel within the police department for related purposes declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption?
Second. It has been moved improperly second that an ordinance amending section twenty-one dash six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting the classification of personnel within the police department for related purposes and declaring an emergency be passed. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance approved.
Move, accept the emergency clause?
Second.
It has been moved that we accept and properly second that we accept the emergency clause. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson.
Aye.
With the emergency clause passed, this ordinance goes into effect immediately.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance.
We just did the merger, right?
Yes, sir.
Because I wanted to ask a question. Did we ever get the chief, the assistant chief corrected? Did we ever get the proper information? I, I missed it because I thought we were going to discuss a second or two. One day we were talking and if the chief of police didn't come within, then what happens when the new chief, another chief comes in? Does that chief leave and does that assistant chief leave or what happens? We understand that if the chief is there, if the assistant chief is already employed by the city, then if the new chief comes in or the chief that present wants to change, then that per- that chief go back to rank before, before they were appointed assistant chief.
Is that what you're saying should be the case? That you'd like, that's the way you'd like to see it?
Yes, because if you, if that does not happen, then you're going to have an extra chief if a new chief comes in and want to hire a new guy.
Well, that's not the way, uh, it stands as of now. Uh, but that's something that can be addressed later, but it's not addressed now.
But it will be a problem if we don't solve it now. We, we need to know what happens. So presently, who's our assistant chief?
Chief Hadley.
Excuse me?
Chief Hadley. Kevin Hadley is our, is our current assistant chief.
So let's say if the chief decides that she doesn't want him to be the assistant chief, then what happens?
Well, it's kind of like what Chief Whitfield said a minute ago. The position is this field. So the only time that chief would be replaced is that a new chief comes in and there's a vacancy in that position.
Okay, I'm, I'm with it. You know, I did make this statement on the last night, we discussed the first time it was a reading. And that was when we was going to get the chief out of Atlanta, Georgia, in that area. He was going to bring a guy with him that will supposedly be his assistant chief.
That's not, that's not the case. He was not going to come in as his assistant chief. It wasn't even said that he would come in with him, period. He was a lieutenant. We were not hiring, we were only considering hiring one person at that time. And that was Chief Jones.
Okay.
But not, not an assistant chief at that time. Now, what you're discussing is something that we really do need to take seriously, but I think it needs to be addressed separate from what we're doing at this time.
Okay, but I think, yeah, it does need to be, you know.
Well, let me say this. I mean, according to, and this is how this ordinance was written before this even came about. So the numbers, uh, as far as the positions, the only thing that changed were the number of people in each slide. But it says that, you know, um, the assistant chief to be appointed by and serve with the discretion of the chief of police and exempt from civil service protection. But that's how it was written already, so that is, I don't know if there is any other policy or anything else out there, but that's how this is written and that's how it's always been written.
Well, I was in the mediation when we, when we just landed the Civil Service Commission. And those, those statements were made and the, and the statements were that the chief of police would appoint who, who he or she wanted to be the assistant. But for some reason, if that changed, that appointment for assistant chief changes, then that person would go back to a normal position that they were in previously before they were assistant chief by that particular chief of police. So.
That's how I understand it.
Uh huh.
That's how I understand it.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, so, but Mayor, I will leave that alone for now.
And what you're saying is that, that the assistant chief should serve at the discrepancy of the chief.
Right.
So that the chief should have the autonomy to choose whoever they choose to have their assistant chief and not inherit a person who is already in that position.
They have to do it within the department?
Yes.
Okay. But we still may discuss this later a little bit.
So we do, we need to.
Yeah.
Uh, because we're not going by the word of what we have in that, uh, legislation, that structure. So, uh, I think when we have our next public safety meeting, we probably need to address that.
I'm good for now.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on that one? Councilmember Holcomb, proceed.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance to close a portion of the East West Alley located north of eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets.
An ordinance to close a portion of the East West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets.
Move for adoption?
Second. It has been moved improperly second that an ordinance to close the portion of East West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets be closed, uh, be approved, should I say. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions?
Now, on to Lockett. No one's complaining about this in the area, right?
No, it's, it's, all this property is owned by the same individuals and it's not a, it's not an alley that's used and they just want to fence in their property. You know, um, alleys and a lot of streets we have planted, they're on the books as alleys and streets, but they don't really exist for any usefulness to the public. So this is an alley that's on paper, but it's not an alley that's used by any utility. And that's, I don't know, sometime we're going to have to address that some, where somehow is that we have alleys in our ordinances, but this is not really a city that uses alleys. I mean, if you, if you go up north, the alleys is where they have the, the cable and all the utilities have their poles in the alleys, but if you come to Pine Bluff, most of your, your utility poles are in the front of, of property. And there's no alleys that, that they utilize. Uh, and it's, sometimes when they're doing developments, they, they plant out alleys, but the way we've evolved as a city, we don't really use alleys.
We do have a few utility alleys, you know, with some exceptions there, but this is an alley that we did look at, Councilmember Mays. And the property owners own everything around it and this is not a utility alley and it's not an alley that handles traffic.
This is the what, first, first ward?
I want to say.
I know it's not the fourth.
First ward.
It's not the fourth ward.
I know it's not the fourth. This first ward.
I'm thinking it's first ward.
First ward. Yeah.
If there, if there are no more questions and comment or comments, let's vote. All in favor of this ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Ordinance approved.
Agenda item number three, an ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Pine Bluff Police, Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take home vehicles and for related purposes up for the third reading.
An ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Pine Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take home vehicles and for related purposes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's removed and properly second that an ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Pine Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take home vehicles and for related purposes be approved. The floor is open for discussions. Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And watch it. I really want to keep this as, as community friendly as possible and with these take home vehicles, you know, as soon as they, if, if, just keep everything safe and sound because if something happened outside the city limits, I'm going, I'm going to be quick to snatch my name off of it. But so far, Chief, I'm, I'm going to go along with it. Uh, I don't want to alter the, uh, police officers to, to get heavy foot or feet and, and forget what they, what they have to give the, uh, attention to and it's a city of Pine Bluff and our citizens. All right.
So you are in favor of the take home vehicles and the terms in the audit, this ordinance?
Pretty much. I talked with Chief already and I'm, I'm going to support it because, you know, right now, I'm, she's doing a great job and the Police Department is moving, so just, uh...
And it's one of the best things that we could do for our city and it's what forward cities, forward thinking and moving cities are doing because it puts in that higher visibility of police, uh, presence throughout the community when the policemen have their take home cars and they're parking them in their residence, they're, they're, they're driving them to the grocery store, to the dry cleaners throughout the community. So it adds that layer of safety that we need in this community. And I think with time, we, we can all see that gradually it's bringing down crime.
Well, I, I understand that, Mayor. I understand it, but if you got an officer driving the car outside the city limits.
No, they're not supposed to drive these cars outside of the city limits unless they live within the range that's probably, that's a limit.
That's what I'm saying. We got to allow. I, I understand, I understand, but it has to be.
I'm sorry.
We had to keep it.
I'm sorry.
Keep it, you know, community friendly.
Jefferson, but no, it's a, it's a, it's a number of miles within Jefferson County.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, you can just jump in and go to the grocery store, to the church, outside the city limits, but they got to be real careful because people are watching.
And I think the chief is going to monitor that.
I, I understand.
Yes, sir.
I understand, but we do have miscommunication in some of our departments. So thank you, Chief, you're doing a great job.
If I may ask, if I may ask, Mayor, how many police officers that have more than twenty years of service that's in our, our department?
How many do we have with more than twenty years of service?
Over twenty years.
Now, I can't answer that question. Chief York, Chief Richardson here. Do you have an idea of how many officers we have with more than twenty years of service?
I do not, but it's probably about a third and our OPS manager has these numbers and I can present them to y'all by morning if you need them.
You said about a third of your officers?
Mm-hmm.
You realize that it's forty-one miles to Red Hill where I go fishing at all the time?
I did not know.
Over twenty-six, twenty-seven miles to Red Hill, that's a lot of gas, a lot of tires, a lot of brakes and a lot of, I mean, everybody thinks we're still being rich, so I'm just, and, and then that simply means that you have Pine Bluff police cars and all time Arkansas, only Pine Bluff police cars in Jefferson, I mean, in, yeah, in, in Red Hill. It's like, okay, they're patrolling an area that, that those tax dollars are not paying them and that's, I mean, if that's the way you want it, but I'm just saying, these are the things that we have to look at. You'll see Pine Bluff and then, and I hope that you will monitor, but you, you may have, uh, a police officer that lives on the borderline of Rising and, or Cleveland County and Jefferson County and he got to have, he got to be over in, uh, Cleveland County with the pretense that he's in Jefferson County because we, we've kind of had something like that with one of our chiefs that was supposed to live here and they were living in another county or whatever case may be, but that's a, that's a big bite, Chief.
Yeah, we're, we're prepared to monitor. We already have a system in place for that. Policy one oh six is a monitoring policy, so this is just an addition and I will monitor that.
Chief.
Madam Mayor.
Well, we, we're probably, we're going to pass this, but this may bring some, some complications later. It might just bring some complications later.
Yes, sir.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Lockett.
Yeah, I got to concur with, with, with the other, all the people. Proximity to the city limits is pretty general, vague and, you know.
Yeah, I see.
I'm just saying, Mayor, the only reason, the logical reason we would pass this is that we support the chief in rewarding her, her officers i- i- that have twenty years of, uh, of, of service and that they be allowed to take cars home, but this is a license to take a car anywhere in the county. It doesn't have a proximity, it doesn't have miles, you know, proximity to the city limits is whatever one may say it is, uh, but here again, as long as it's not excessive, now, I, I just don't want it to be said that we got forty or fifty cars that are in the county somewhere. I mean, uh...
She said a third.
Hmm?
No, she said with, with twenty years of service, not, not necessarily outside the city.
That's the only one that could.
But I mean, that's what I'm saying, there's no way to, you know, to quantify this, you know, i- if third of them live outside the county, then that's the third that possibly could take a car, uh, there.
Remember, that's all time patrolling, that's, uh...
But Chief, I, you know, I'll support it a- a- and we monitor it, we just don't want it to be, there is a lot of wear i- if a person is taking it too far outside of the city limits now. If they just five miles, that makes sense, but...
Forty-one miles of Red Hill, Arkansas.
Yes, but I'm just saying, uh, with it not being a mileage determination, this council has no way to know what proximity to the city limits really is, but, but we'll su- support it as long as it doesn't cause us any great harm in the future that we be doing a lot of repair to cars.
Yes, sir.
And Chief, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. You go ahead and then I would, I was just going to have him to add me as a sponsor. You done it.
Oh, me too. You could add me too. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the purpose of this is for them to be able to take the vehicles home so that that way in case of them having to come into work, they can immediately be in a official car to come back and be in a timely manner to help.
That's one of the benefits.
And then, um, it's not for them to take it home and then take it and use it as a personal use to go anywhere else.
They can, man, go home with it.
That's correct.
But if you're monitoring the mileage.
That's already in the policy.
And all that stuff in the policy, one oh six, right?
Yes, ma'am. We do that now. We do, we do that now.
So that's what I'm saying, if you're monitoring the mileage.
But they drive forty-one miles, they, it's just like, they can do what they want to do. If they drive it all the time, they live, they can drive around from one store, one gas station, one place.
Well, we hoping that they're leading with integrity and not doing that.
I'm just looking out for the city.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's all. I mean, we're going to prove this, but I just want us to know the things that we're looking at ahead of time, that's all.
And then, uh, Councilmember also too, and I spoke with the chief about it, that uh, these take home cars, they are at the discretion of the chief, so if something happens and she feels that that person is not being responsible with the vehicle, then she has every right to remove that vehicle, so it won't be that people just drive all over and do what they want. Um, you know, if something goes on or something happens, then she can pull the, pull that right for them to take that car home.
And, and then we have to look at the fact that Pine Bluff and Jefferson County are basically one. So you have a lot of, of officers, I don't know how many, but I know you do have officers in the county that have take home cars and I'm glad Chief, uh, Sheriff Woods is here? Did I see him?
And I can say one is right around the corner for me.
And they have cars, they have county cars that are parked at houses in the city. So vice versa, and either way it goes, it's going to have an effect to eliminate or reduce crime i- in the area. Uh, I do agree.
That's not a great comparison, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
That's not a great comparison.
It is a comparison, though. It, it, it does make...
Not to me, because the county sheriff's department, they do the entire landscape.
Right.
Entire, but we don't do the entire county, we just do the city, so...
But if there is a need for an officer and I'm, one of our officers is on duty and there's an emergency, could they respond?
Absolutely. They, they must respond, that's also in the policy.
That's in the policy?
Yes.
Okay, but with the car being here, parked here at the main station, they would have to drive their personal car here and then respond, which is going to increase that response time tremendously.
I just want us all to be aware, that's all.
Okay. If there is any more discussion, I'll probably, I'll be there.
No, let me say something. Old Man Brown Senior is right, he, he just want to be careful. I mean, we, we have to be careful because this is serious, very serious and you have, you might have an officer, you know, that stopped by his cousin's house in the car, get a beer. I'm just saying, this is real life, this is not no movie, but I'm going to support you and I appreciate you and whatever you need me to do, I'm going to support you. But as soon as they, anybody messes up, well, this is all the grown people, I'm taking it back and I'm going to reverse this.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief Richardson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All in favor of ordinance number three? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or this number three passes?
Moving on to agenda item three A and we are going to complete this on tonight. Agenda item three A, an ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities, NSSC, at John J. College and declaring an emergency.
Whereas the City of Pine Bluff is committed to addressing the emerging group violence problem, Pine Bluff has identified group violence intervention as its approach to address the concerns of youth violence because it balances accountability with intervention. To that, in the city's designated advisory committee, attended training and participated in on-saw observation and networking provided by NSSC at John J. College. And whereas to facilitate effective implementation of strategies and tactics to combat juvenile crime, consultation by John J., John J. College is paramount to ensuring the success of the city's GIV program. And whereas it is in the best interest of the City of Pine Bluff to enter into an agreement with NSCS at John J. College as a consultant for the GVI program in an amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in partnership with Jefferson County Circuit Court Sixth Division. And whereas further, the City of Pine Bluff and Jefferson County Circuit Court Sixth Division has agreed to share the cost of hiring consultant to be memorialized by a memorandum of understanding setting forth that the City of Pine Bluff's commitment shall be an amount of thirty thousand dollars and for Sixth Division shall commit to pay the balance of ninety thousand dollars. And whereas as its creator, NSCS at, uh, NSSC at John J. College is the foremost authority in development and implementation of effective strategies and tactics to achieve the stated goals of GVI, twas competitive bidding to hire consultant for the GVI program will be inefficient and impractical. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council finds that requiring competitive bidding to obtain a consultant to facilitate implementation of the GVI program would be inefficient and impractical. Section two, that the mayor is authorized and directed to contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College as a consultant for the GVI program for the consideration of approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars set forth in the attached documents with the understanding that the City of Pine Bluff shall only be responsible for the initial payment of thirty thousand dollars. Section three, the mayor is further authorized to enter into agreement with Jefferson County Circuit Court Sixth Division to be responsible for the balance of the aforementioned contract in the amount of ninety thousand dollars to be evidenced by the attached memorandum of understanding. Section four, the city's payment of thirty thousand dollars should be funded from the two thousand seventeen five eight cent sales tax revenue, youth products general ledger line out number twenty-one zero 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 four zero zero dot oh seven. Section five, reducing the circle of violence and combating crime in the city is priority one to municipal government and residents and an indispensable element to quality of life because of petty juvenile mischief and acts of violence is critical to public health, safety and welfare and emergencies declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force of effect upon its passage.
Suspend the rules, place this ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryson.
Aye.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College and declaring an emergency.
Suspend the rules, place this ordinance up for its third and final reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that an ordinance be placed on its third and final reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryson.
Aye.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's removed and properly second that an ordinance waiving competitive bids, bidding and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College and declaring an emergency be approved. The floor is open for discussion.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Me too.
Yeah.
As all of us are.
Oh, yeah, I think this is definitely some good stuff.
I like for Judge, Judge Brown.
So is that everybody wanting to be added as a sponsor? Anybody want to be nominated?
I'm already, I'm already sponsoring.
Okay, Joe, you can catch that for us. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing non.
Just that we can get Judge Brown to say something.
Why do we need Judge Brown to say something? Judge Brown, you want to say something?
He just wants us to say yes.
He just wants us to say yes, that's it.
I think so.
Anybody have questions for Judge Brown? Are there any questions or concerns for Judge Brown? Okay, there don't seem to be any, so let's vote. All in favor of this ordinance let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, ordinance approved.
Move accept the emergency clause.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner.
Aye.
Councilmember Fraser, aye. Councilmember Brunson, aye.
Emergency clause approved. This ordinance goes into effect immediately.
Agenda item three B, up for the first reading. An ordinance amending section two dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting limitation of terms as regard to planning commission and for related purposes.
Whereas to revoke the efficiency of the city's planning commission, the members thereof should be exempt from the limitation of terms and service set forth in the city code. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section one, section two dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas has amended to add a new subsection E to read. The limitation of years of service, the subsection C and the terms of service in subsection D shall not apply to appointments or reappointments to the planning commission. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with or repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section three, this ordinance is of a general or permanent nature, and the clerk will ensure it is published as required by law. Section four, this ordinance takes effect on twelve oh one AM on the thirty-first day after its adoption or the date of its publication, whichever is later.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number four, a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Whereas the city has an existing contract with Civic Plus of Manhattan, Kansas for development of a website for the Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas this contract is soon to expire, additional time is needed to complete the work developing the website. And it is desired to extend this agreement to pay the consideration for the services to ensure continuity of work and lock in the price. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section one, that the mayor is authorized and directed to extend the existing contract with Civic Plus of Manhattan, Kansas, where it services developing a website for the Pine, Parks, and Recreation Department. Section two, the consideration for the agreement will not exceed sixty-five thousand dollars, which will be funded from the Advancing Health Literacy Grant awarded in city funds which must be used by July one, two thousand twenty-three.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for the Parks and Recreation Department be approved. The floor is open for discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple. Uh, Mr. Glover still is on the.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Glover is still signed off on this. And he's not, no longer with the city. And, uh, the, uh, the amount is, once again, sixty, sixty thousand? What is that?
Well, it cannot exceed sixty-five and.
Year annually. Is that annually? Sixty-five thousand annually?
Total.
Total.
That's the total amount.
One total or annually?
To build a website is sixty-five. William, is that the total amount or is it annual? I think it's the, it's the total amount for our four-year period. It covers four years. I knew it wasn't annually. It's sixty-five thousand over a four-year period. And this is money that's, uh, from the Advancing Health Literacy Grant that, um, William has served as the administrator of. And so Parks and Recreation did need a major upgrade on their website. And so it's just fortunate that we can take that money and use it to cover that website upgrade. And, William, you want to speak to that?
And, and, and what about Mr. Glover's name that's still on here? It's just, he's.
Well, Mr. Glover was just the director when we, um, approved year one for the website. But we were trying to get this passed, um, at our last meeting before our grant period ended. So our grant period actually ended on Friday. And so we'll still negotiate with our grant office and also the website company to see if we can still use some of the grant funds to cover the website. So if you all pass that resolution, at least we'll be able to move forward. But if we're not able to cover it with the grant funds, then we'll just have to come back through, through the budget cycle each year for the council to pass a yearly subscription.
So this sixty-five thousand will cover for our four years if we can pass this and get it into the cycle?
Ye- ye- yes, ma'am. If the grant office approves, we'll be able to use the grant funds for an additional four years. The city, we're already covering year one of the website. And it's been developed and we should be rolling that out this summer.
I guess what I'm saying is Mr. Glover's name is still, he doesn't mind?
No, his name will come off of that. That was just year one. He was there when we signed it for year one. But moving forward, that name will change. Any other questions? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Dewalt's Deluxe for grass maintenance and cutting services along Martha Mitchell Expressway.
Whereas the Arkansas Highway Department cuts the grass along Martha Mitchell Expressway three times a year, but this is not sufficient to maintain the grass growth along the right-of-way medians. And whereas the city advertised on newspaper of general circulation in the city and county inviting interested vendors to submit bids to provide grass maintenance and cutting services along the expressway for the months June through October two thousand twenty-three, which is the prime growing season. And the firm of Dewalt's Deluxe submitted the lowest, most responsible bid to do the work. And the mayor should be authorized to contract with the firm for the job. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. The mayor has authorized a contract with Dewalt's Deluxe for the firm to provide grass maintenance and cutting services along Martha Mitchell Expressway from its intersection with Bryant Street Southwest to its intersection with Marcus Street on the terms found in the bid documents and pertinent to the work of this nature with maximum consideration of sixty-two thousand dollars, which will be sourced from CARES Act funds.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It has been moved in properly second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Dewalt's Deluxe for grass maintenance and cutting services along Martha Mitchell Expressway be approved. The floor is open for discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Agenda item number six, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Rental Construction and Commercial Roofing Company for repairs to the Singer Theater.
Whereas there is straight deed to effect repairs to the roof and plumbing of the city-owned Singer Theater. And whereas after contacting several roofing companies in Pine Bluff and Little Rock, the only company prepared to provide an estimate for repairs is Rental Construction and Commercial Roofing Company. And whereas ACS section fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three D two B, prohibits the city to, by resolution, waive competitive bidding in exceptional situations where not feasible or practical. And whereas under the circumstances, competitive bidding to obtain the work is impractical and not feasible as there is no reason to believe that any other qualified vendor will submit a bid for the work. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Let the city council find that under the circumstances of competitive bidding to secure a qualified vendor to perform the needed work of plumbing repairs on the Singer Theater is not feasible or practical and should be and is hereby waived. Section two, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to exit contract with Rental Construction and Commercial Roofing Company to effect repairs as needed and described in the attached proposal dated June ninth, two thousand twenty-three for the consideration of forty-six thousand two hundred and five dollars and on other terms and conditions standard in the field for work of this nature. Section three, the fore-said resolution will to take effect, be taken from special project funds. Section four, this resolution takes effect immediately upon adoption.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Rental Construction and Commercial Roofing Company for repairs to be made to the Singer Theater be approved. The floor is open for discussion?
I just have one thing.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Cause I was wondering, um, with it being in the form of resolution instead of an ordinance, I was just wondering, cause we're waiving competitive bidding, so I didn't understand that. I'm not trying to hold it up or anything. I was just wondering.
Legislature amended the law to allow you to do it by resolution.
Okay. Okay.
If it's a certain amount, is that right?
No, it's for any waiver.
Any waiver, okay.
Of competitive bidding, yeah.
Okay, I know previously we've been doing it always by.
Yes, it was by ordinance, but they amended the law to let you do it by resolution.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Would this here complete and secure the roof?
That, that is the goal. Now there's still a, uh, issue underneath the street that runs in front of the Singer Theater. And the street department is looking at that. But right now, we're trying to secure every phase of the roof of the building. And that we're kind of trying to mothball it. Now, the roof of the, the main portion of the building was done by Community Development a few years ago.
I remember voting.
That was before I came on board.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Who, who will, who will manage and supervise the project?
In the past, Mr. Matthews just walked out. It's been Community Development, uh, Supervising Network. He is Public Works.
Okay.
And so he will be the person to be over, have oversight of that. He has, uh, oversight of all Public Works jobs. Any other questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say, y'all, you have to put this up because we just fixed this roof. I thought we did.
We didn't fix this portion of the roof.
I'm just saying, but this should, this area was secured to get it steady for the next.
But it's been a number of years since, uh, the work that was done, was done. And I think this portion looked fairly good at that time. Cause it's been, I've been here seven years and it's been more than seven years. Cause it was done before I came into office.
It was.
It's been a neighborhood of eight or ten years.
Yeah, I remember voting on it.
Yeah.
I thought I'd finish it, but security, security, that's, that's security. That's a good building, good structure.
Well, it has potential and we need to, to, um, mothball it if we can until we can do more to, to repair that structure and bring it back to life. If there's no more question, if there are no more questions and no more discussion, let's vote. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that was an aye from Shaner. Resolution approved.
Agenda item number seven, a resolution appointing Adrian Cooper to the Planning Commission.
Whereas the term of Latasha Woods as a member of the Planning Commission has expired and the mayor has appointed Adrian Cooper to the position subject to council approval. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. That the mayor's appointment of Adrian Cooper to the Planning Commission should serve a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Adrian Cooper to the Planning Commission be approved. The floor is open for discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved. Is Ms. Cooper here tonight? Ms. Cooper, stand if you will. Uh, we want to thank you so very much for accepting the, the, the challenge. Cause sometimes it can be challenging. Because the Planning Commission is one of those where you really have to work. It's a serious committee. So we thank you for accepting that challenge to serve your community. Would you like to have a comment? She looked like she wanted to say something. We usually let.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve my city.
Let's give her a hand for looking at this as an opportunity. We need more citizens who are willing to accept that challenge and look at it as an opportunity to make their community a better place. Thank you so very much.
Agenda item number eight, a resolution appointing Kiana C. Colclager to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees.
Whereas there is a vacancy in the position representing the city on the Board of Trustees for the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library System. And whereas the mayor has appointed Kiana C. Colclager to the vacancy subject to council approval. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. That the mayor's appointment of Kiana C. Colclager to the Board of Trustees of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library System to serve a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Kiana C. Colclager to the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees be approved. The floor is open for discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved. Is Kiana here tonight? But if you happen to see Kiana out and about, she teaches that friendship is fire. She may be out for the summer. But if you see her out and about, give her a pat on the back, a handshake for accepting this position serving on the Jefferson County Pine Bluff Library Board.
Resolution number nine, a resolution appointing Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board.
Whereas with the death of Bill Bridgeforth, there is a vacancy on the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. And whereas the remaining board members have recommended Rosalyn M. Mauser to fill the vacancy, the mayor has appointed her to the position subject to council approval. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the appointment of Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board to serve a term to expire July first, two thousand twenty-seven is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Rosalyn M. Mauser to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board be approved. The floor is open for discussion?
Yes, I have something, Mayor. Ms. Mauser has always had a heart to serve. You know, really. And she'll do a good job. I just, I believe. I just know it by the fact. She, she has always shown a heart to, to want to be, want to, want to, want to serve. You know, congratulations. You got my support.
Ms. Mauser, did you pay him? Any other comments? Hearing none. Uh, let's vote. All in favor of Rosalyn Mauser to serve on the Public Facilities Board? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Mauser, thank you so much for that heart of service to me that you have and your willingness to serve this community and continue to serve your community. Thank you so much.
Agenda.
Did you have comments? You're good? Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number ten, a resolution appointing Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board.
Whereas Marty Castillo has resigned as a member of the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board. And whereas the remaining board members have recommended Roland Watley to fill the vacancy, the mayor has appointed him to the position subject to council approval. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the appointment of Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board serve a term to expire July one, two thousand twenty-five is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for, move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Roland Watley to the City of Pine Bluff Hotel Public Facilities Board be approved. The floor is open for discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Watley has always had a heart to serve too, the community. Uh, as well as when he was working at UAPB. Uh, he's, he's, he's a, he's a, he'll serve well.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor of this appointment? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Watley, congratulations. You're a member of the Public Facilities Board. Thank you for your willingness to continue to serve your community. Would you like to comment or you're good? Okay, let's give Mr. Watley a big round of applause. Thank you so much to all of you who rise to the occasion to serve in your communities.
Agenda item number eleven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property to Don LaTey Investment LLC, Lot Six Henderson Subdivision, Southwest Corner, Twentieth and Pine.
Whereas the city is a record owner of the real property described below. And whereas an offer to purchase realty has been received from Don LaTey Investment LLC. And whereas the offer is fair and reasonable and transferring the property to private ownership frees the city of the annual cost of maintenance and promotes objectives consistent with the public good. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section one, upon payment of the sum of one thousand dollars, the mayor is authorized and directed to convey by quick claim deed to Don LaTey Investment LLC the following described real property. Section two, payment of the consideration is due within ninety days after the passage of this resolution. Payment should be remitted to the city clerk's office and inform a payment acceptable to the collector. Purchasers shall provide the city attorney with receipt evidentiary proof of payment. Once payment is made, the city attorney's office will prepare the quick claim deed to the purchaser. If payment is not made within the time period and no extensive grant, this authorization is void.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property to Delante Investments, Lot Six Henderson Subdivision, Southwest Corner, Twentieth and Pine. Be approved. The floor is open for discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, that ends our agenda items. We have two speakers coming to speak on non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Jacqueline Smith, wanting to address community wellness.
Good evening. I'm here, um, to address in reference to community wellness issues.
Is her mic on?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
I do not want to omit that my appearance here will be in regularity and so will my attempts to address such issues concerning the citizens and myself and that which the city offers or not to us. Uh, some of the ordinance today is, is what I'm addressing. Some of the ordinances relative to the food vending ordinance is not in appliance with, compliance with state law. I spoke to one of your city officers here trying to obtain a permit. And relative to the paperwork that I got, it was discriminatory and some more things. So I spoke to the state office and the state office gave me the regularities on it. But I then had to deliberate in the office with the young lady who continued to tell me that the city ordinances could be stiffer, but not if they're not in compliance with state laws. So my thing here is after my review of what was and is on the paperwork and what I've received from the Little Rock office, I got some conflicts. And I know that you all were, in my attendance, I've heard that you all were revising some of your ordinances. And I wanted to bring these to your attention because there are some things which I have obtained. I started business in two thousand and eight. I obtained all these permits and permissions before, through the city of Pine Bluff and Little Rock, Arkansas. They all did my evaluations of my home, my property, and my business. And now I'm being told that they are not permissible. And they go against city ordinances. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and also ask a question. In reference to this ordinance, this food vending ordinance, it could bring the city roughly about a quarter of a million dollars a year with just fifty citizens participating in it. Not to mention the outside vendors that may come in during seasonal or holiday celebrations. So I was just wondering why that would be even incorporated in the ordinances or omitted from the ordinances.
Can I ask a question? What, what type of business do you, are you, are you referring to? What's your business?
Food, catering, uh, vending.
And what part of the ordinance are you saying that changed?
I'm not saying it changed. The office said it changed.
Well, what, what, what part, what, what part?
Well, she said that, uh, the citizens, under the permit, cannot prepare their food at home, in their homes that was not permitted under the stiffer ordinance of the city. Um, and it was a few more things, but it's on the paperwork that she gave me. And I, like I said, I spoke to her and I spoke to Little Rock. I said, I spoke to her, and I spoke to Little Rock, and they're not, what she's saying is not in compliance with what law allows.
So, Councilmember Lockett, does food vendors come under your committee? Is that, is that developed?
It does.
Let's, let's do this, let's get her information and add her to your agenda, and let's get zoning and, you know, Mitzi and that team in on that meeting so we can discuss exactly what her concerns are, what the discrepancies might be between the city's ordinances and the state policies.
Right, we, we can do that. Madam Clerk, I'm looking at potentially having a meeting on next Tuesday at one o'clock if the city council chambers are available. One o'clock.
What date is that? What day?
That is going to be the, um...
Date.
Eleven. Is that going to be fine with you?
I don't know, I have a previous meeting with another one of your offices that, earlier that day.
Okay.
But I can call you about one o'clock.
Why don't you just call the clerk's office maybe tomorrow?
We can arrange a meeting to, to, to address the issue, uh, I, I, you know, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we have the time now to drill down what specifically that you have, but we, I don't have a, I don't have a problem getting with our inspection department, the zoning department, and seeing what we can do to see how we can, see what the issue is. All right?
Thank you so much.
You're most welcome.
You all have a nice day.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we had Julius Lever, I believe, as a speaker, and that's our final speaker for tonight, and Julius Lever wanted to speak on, hmm, public nuisance.
Nuisance, right.
Hey, bro, how you doing here? Can I get one of them on?
Caesar, Caesar, talk while you're walking, D.C.
Yeah, go ahead, start talking.
Talk while you're walking. You all right?
I want to make sure Brother Shaner is listening. Can anybody ask him if he's listening? Well, let me say this, last time I was here, I said that there might be possibly, I, I thought there was a conflict of interest, and I mentioned that there were several conflicts of interest mentioned that day, and I said that Shaner, Mr. Shaner, was on Urban Renewals Board, and he corrected me, first of all, Mayor Washington said, are you saying he's on the board of Urban Renewal? I said, I didn't say anything, she said, I don't think so. Shaner says, no, I'm not on Urban Renewal Board, and I've never been on Urban Renewal Board, and I said I was checking my documents, so I did check my documents, and he and Mayor Washington were completely accurate, but something stood out in my mind, and I didn't remember what it was, and it was that Shaner is the one, I would say, Lynn Long, the wife of Judge Alex Gwin, her name is Lynn Long Gwin, she's the wife of Judge Alex Gwin, and I think there possibly is a conflict of interest in his, in her regard. I noticed that Mayor Washington nominated her for a position to take Rita Connelly's place when Rita Connelly was sick, and after doing so, serving in the interim, it was Steve Shaner that nominated her to continue the position until the term expired. And so the reason why this conflict of interest is troubling me is because I went before Judge Alex Gwin about Urban Renewal removing property on Main and Harding Street to the wastewater management landfill and burying it the same day. I have mentioned many times here that the city council never voted, and as my understanding of every ordinance that's present within the city, the city council has the sole responsibility of determining which property can be put on the nuisance list, and for personal property, business property, religious property to be confiscated, and there is no record of what was taken. I have a letter y'all won't let me read to Janice Roberts that was written three thirty-one when I was sharing with her and asking her if she in the clerk's office had any accounting of the things that were taken, and I did go to the city attorney's office right after then and give, at the Hutton Scott, a copy of it. But what I've given to you today is something called Chapter twenty-nine. On the first page, it's going to, or I think it's on the second page, it's two, two items I want you to look at. One is twenty-eight, one sixty-five, and one is twenty-eight, one seventy-two. And it won't take very long, I think, for you all to look at that. The reason being is twenty-eight, one seventy-two, it is my understanding from reading, that that's the ordinance that's supposed to be evaluated. But on your front page, it's all under water, sewage, sewer, and sewage disposal. So how could a public nuisance, or how could something be a public nuisance unless it deals with water, sewer, or sewage disposal? Now, there was an African-American man, Judge Kearney, that had the case, he found me guilty. I went to him and I expressed some things to him, he said, I'm gonna give you a new trial, so justice can be served, and that was written, and I have a letter here, the same letter I presented last time, and what troubles me is this entire criminal justice system. Why? Because when I was there at the court, I went back to ask for this letter that Judge Kearney had written, and a woman named Randy Bolden wouldn't give it to me. She works for the district court. Why? Because she worked for the city attorney's office first, so she's a plant, in my opinion, in the district court, and I noticed she's worked her way up, so she's the first one you meet, and she's very discouraging, and she can smile so good and deny you your due process rights in thirty seconds.
Mr. Lever, you've already gone over your time, could you go ahead and...
Yeah, I, I will say.
Okay.
What, what you, you do see, this piece of paper here says water, sewer, sewer, and sewage disposal, do you not?
Yes.
I don't hear, okay. Did you go, the second page is twenty-eight, one sixty-five, it says water course protection.
Yes.
Now, what is water course protection? What is water course? Water course is when you have a body of land, and it's a pool of water that runs into a stream, and if you pollute that water, it runs downstream against other people's property. I don't have that problem. Okay, so you go to twenty-eight, one seventy-two, right here, and I'm sure Joe Childress knows all about this, at least I would think he would, but again, okay...
So, Mr. Lever, are you saying that you were found in violation of these?
I'm, I'm saying I was found in violation that is no way possible could even exist. This is not about junk or trash or religious property, this is about water course. Now, I'm gonna tell you, the second thing troubles me greatly, is because knowing these things, I went to an office in the city and asked them about it, and they said, I don't know what this is. Do this have something to do with me? No, this ain't got, I don't know who this has something to do with. Can you print it? She tried to print it on her computer, but it wouldn't print, so she then said, let me go to somebody else's office. She went to another office, they pulled it up, they tried to print it, it wouldn't even print, and then I said, well, what else can I do? They, they were bewildered about it. I said, I'm gonna go to the clerk's office, and I went to Janice Roberts' office, and it was printed. That's how I can show it to you now. If it wasn't for Janice Roberts having the ability to show it and being willing her office to show it, I wouldn't have it to discuss with you. So what I'm saying is, you take a man's property over something that is bogus, and God knows how many people have been in prison, how many people, see, a lot of times civic organizations say, we got to get some of these people out of prison, they've been in prison for life, for thirty and forty years, but what about all the people in prison for ten and twelve years that was done the same way? Nobody cares about them because that's not as significant as life or the death penalty. And I'm suggesting to you, I wouldn't have believed this, and I tried to understand when I was in jail about something like this, they said, they put a gangster move on you. When I went to sell their company some time ago, they said, the woman said, they're the devil. I mean, she don't know me, she know me when she seen, but she said, they're the devil. So what I'm saying to you is, there is a lot of crooked stuff going on, and I can't understand why so much effort, and you know, Joe Childress is not saying anything, he's able to say something, but I can't understand why a person would go so far. Now, I do try to understand what's going on about the property on Main and Harding Street, and I came to some conclusions, and I don't want to bore you with the detail, but I will say this, I bought the property two thousand and two, my mother and I, we put it, I put in latest names because I know so many times, things I'd like to just get out of control, because I can tell you some horror stories that happened to me while I was young, and now the city seems like it want to give it to someone who had it in an attempt early, when it's an expensive trust, and expensive trust is where you build your generational wealth, when you put it out of the hands of people that can dismiss it or sell it, so it's not for sale. We don't want to sell it, so don't try to buy it from somebody that don't own it. Now, Mr. Joe Childress, after Hutton Scott is not here, so she would have responsibilities to respond, in her absence, would you be willing to respond?
Caesar.
All right, Mr. Mays, let's give him thirty seconds. Thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-three, twenty, fifteen, ten, five, four, three, two, one. Now, Mr. Mays, what do you have to say?
No, I'm just gonna say, whatever you need, I got, I'm, I'm with you, man, support you from...
Well, if we need Alex Gwin to, to let me loose, take the chains off of me, I'm appealing something now in his hands, and it's been taken now in February, but they still holding me to the ground, and then taking a property over bogus situation. Thank you very much.
I see Judge Gwin, man.